I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board, regular meeting of July 25th, 2016, to order. Roll call, please, Andy.
Hood.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Ballmas.
Present.
Six present.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before I open the floor for public comment, I would like to compliment staff on a phenomenal job with the UL International Crown. I know, David, you assisted with traffic logistics, Fred, command center all weekend, Kevin, I think Jason led everybody, led the team out there, but I have nothing but positive feedback from everyone that attended or was there, Jack, all your support, so I just loved every time on TV that it said, "Gurnee, Illinois." I think, I mean, it just really highlighted our area, so thank you for all the extra work and effort this weekend, you did us proud. I will open the floor to public comment. Anybody like to address the board? State your name, please.
My name is Brian Neme, I live at 4971 Adele Drive in Gurnee. And first, I would like to thank the Police Department for your house watch program. I've been using it for years, and I really appreciate the jobs you do, especially in the winter when I can see your tracks in the snow when I come home. Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the Warren Newport Public Library. Maybe some of you have already heard about an event we're doing on August 28th called the First Annual Warren Newport Public Library Bikers for Books Mayor Dick Welton Memorial Ride. So it's gonna be a fundraiser for unfunded technology for the children's library section. And I approached the board last fall on what we might do as a fundraising event involving motorcycles for the library, and we came up with this. So it's gonna take place on August 28th. It's gonna start at Fat Man's, it's gonna end at Fat Man's. We're having motorcycles, of course, but anybody can attend, you don't have to ride a motorcycle. We're gonna have an after-event party picnic buffet that Fat Man's will provide. And we're also going to have the Highwood School of Rock students come and play for us for two hours. And I heard these kids play in Rosemont at the International Motorcycle Show in February, and that's why I asked them. So I think a splendid time is guaranteed for all.
Do you have some information you can leave with it? It sounds like a wonderful event.
I have flyers here that I will leave.
Okay, if you give them to Jack, we'll help you promote the event.
I also wanted to thank you for getting the Mayor Welton Memorial almost finished, just in time for our ride. Because that will be the last stop on our event.
Oh, okay.
We're handing out raffle tickets at three, four places. The community libraries of Salem, Wisconsin, and Twin Lakes, Wisconsin. I talked with the director there, and she agreed to allow us to pull into their parking lot, hand out raffle tickets to our riders, and then they're gonna go to Gurnee, to Warren Newport Library, and then make the last stop at the memorial. And I wanted to make sure all the riders had a chance to see the memorial, because it is the Mayor Dick Welton Memorial Ride.
Yes, and it's looking very good, thanks to trustee Ross.
I'll take up no more of your time.
Scott Rovicki and Tracy Velkover, so.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Who shall I give these to?
Let Jack have them, and we'll make sure we give it plenty of publicity with all of our...
Thank you very much.
All right, great, it was good to see you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna move on to approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ballmas.
Second.
Second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please, Andy.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item number one, approval of the menace on the July 11, 2016 Village Board meeting. Item number two, approval of ordinance 2016-48, amending the Village of Gurnee Personnel Policy Manual. Item number three, approval of fire medic Nick Perry's request to participate in the village's tuition assistance program in pursuit of a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College. Item number four, approval of a fireworks permit for Gurnee days on August 13, 2016. Item number five, approval of payroll for period ending July 9, 2016, in the amount of $792,981.7. Item number six, approval of payroll transfer journal for period ending July 9, 2016, in the amount of $786,130.24. Item number seven, approval of bills for the period ending July 25, 2016, in the amount of $1,818,148.38.
All right, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read into the record?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Andy.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Move on to petitions and communications. The first one is National Stop on Red Week, which is August 1 through 7, 2016. The Village of Gurnee is building broad, community-based partnerships to increase awareness on the widespread problem of red light running. And in 1998, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the American Trauma Society established National Stop on Red Week to set aside one week of every year to raise public awareness about this completely preventable and deadly form of aggressive driving. And red light running is the leading cause of urban crashes, according to the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. In 2013, 697 people were killed, and an estimated 130,000 were injured nationally in red light running crashes. And the nearly two-thirds of the deaths and injuries from red light running-related crashes were people other than the red light runner, including bicyclists, pedestrians, and occupants of other vehicles. And the financial cost to the public of all crashes exceeded $230 billion each year, and red light safety cameras reduced traffic fatalities by 24 percent. And more than 36 percent of drivers continue to run red lights and take risks, despite the fact that 55 percent of the participants said it is a very serious threat, and 73 percent acknowledged that running red lights is unacceptable. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christina Kavark, do proclaim that the week of August 1 through August 7 is hereby designated as 2016 National Stop on Red Week in the Village of Gurnee. I urge everyone to reduce crashes, injuries, and the tragic loss of life by stopping for red lights. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion by trustee Thorstensen, second by trustee Garner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, National Stop on Red Week. Next up, I'd like to recommend with the board's approval Deputy Chief Sandra Campbell to the Emergency Telephone Systems Board. Our previous member, Al Marquatt, left the village recently, so Sandra has agreed to step in and serve on that very important board that manages a lot of very important stuff with the 911. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ross, second by trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please, Andy.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Did it carry? All right, congratulations Deputy Chief Campbell on your appointment.
Thank you very much.
All right, you will serve proudly, I know. All right, that's everything under petitions and communications, so we have some reports tonight. Our fourth quarter financial performance from our finance director, Brian. A PowerPoint, do you want to lead off, Patrick?
There's no, there's no lead off.
Okay.
Brian's jumping right into it.
Brian's got it under control.
All right, thank you. Inclu materials, quarterly financial status report for the fourth quarter for fiscal year 16. This represents information through the end of the year, April 30, 2016, and it'll be the final report for the year. Before we get into the numbers, just where we're at in the process, the final report for fiscal year 2015, 2016, the first quarter report for 2016, 2017, in which we're a few months into the, into that fiscal year will be in September, and then we're starting the long-range plans for fiscal year 2017, 2018, so continuous, continuous process here. Cash and investments at the end of the year were just over $33 million. General fund made up about 63 percent of that, water and sewer about 15 percent, and the capital fund 9 percent, with the other funds making up the remainder. 56 percent of all cash on hand was held in money market accounts, primarily Illinois funds, 23 percent in checking accounts, primarily at First Midwest Bank, and 21 percent in short-term fixed income investments held by Schwab, that's what's managed by Sawyerfield due to the asset manager. Versus 91-day T-bill, rate of 0.22 percent. Village's portfolio is earning a weighted average of 0.535, so we are outperforming our internal benchmark there. Major revenues in the general fund, these account for about 75 percent of all revenues in the general fund, finished the year in total with a positive variance of 2.9 percent, or about $806,000. That's versus budget, and about 2.08 percent, or about $585,000 versus last year. So from a major revenue standpoint, some pretty strong performance. A couple things I just want to point out, sales tax collections flattened at the end of the year. In fact, four of the last six months finished behind the previous year. We're seeing that continue into the first quarter of this fiscal year as well, so it's certainly something that we'll keep an eye on and see how that trend progresses. Income tax, finished last year 9.56 percent, or about $291,000 ahead of budget, almost 10 percent, or $303,000 ahead of last year. We saw some nice increases over the last two years, but according to the IML, that is due to change, and we expected that when we went through the budget. That's expected to come down a little bit in the next fiscal year. Telecom taxes, no surprise here, continued to slide, finished the year under budget by 0.52 percent, but we did budget for a 5 percent drop, drop in that, in that revenue source, and we budgeted for a 6 percent decrease this year, so we expect to see that pretty much steadily decline till it's, till either legislative change or that revenue stream is fairly dried up. Amusement and hotel taxes finished strong, didn't see the traditional drop-off the year following a new ride at Six Flags. Food and beverage receipts benefited from, obviously, Portillo's in the last four months, and then building permits finished ahead of budget due to the timing of some developments on Tower Court and Portillo's. All major revenues finished either pretty much right at or just over the year-end estimates. When we went through the budget process, we estimated what it would be at year-end, so we were right on target there, so no surprises in the last few months of fiscal year, which is a, which is a good thing. General fund total revenues finished 4.53 percent, or 1.7 million, over budget. Major variances in revenues outside of the ones we just talked about, charges for service finished up almost 14 percent over budget, ambulance billing was the primary driver there, fines and forfeitures up almost 25 percent, red light collections in the largest year since we've been in the I-Drop program, which is the state collection program. In total, general fund revenues finished about $250,000 ahead of the year-end estimate, so pretty close when you consider a $30 million, $30 million budget for what we estimated where we'd finish. General fund expenditures finished the year about $306,000 under budget. Couple highlights, savings in the salary and wages category due to vacancies. As you recall, during the budget preparation, we budgeted for full staff all year as a conservative budgeting tool, so whenever there's a vacancy, we will see some savings there. Professional services was under budget due to reduced collection on the red light cameras, or reduced fees, and less-than-anticipated costs for the labor attorney services this year, so saved us some money. Also, lower-than-expected fuel, snow and ice control, and vehicle maintenance costs, so the vehicle replacement program is starting to see some benefits there, was exacerbated in this year. Significant overages occurred in employee benefits due to greater-than-anticipated costs with the village's self-insured health insurance plan. Had some, late in the year, had some, had some larger claims that hit us in that area. And then, other financing uses, that was due to the $800,000 transfer of surplus at the end of the year to the capital funds in accordance with long-term financial and capital plans. So we're able to stick to those commitments there. After the capital transfers, general fund finished the year with a surplus of 1.34 million, which is only $50,000 off of where we thought it would end in our year-end estimates during budget prep, so pretty good estimates. Water and sewer operating fund finished the year with a surplus of 1.27 million. The year-end estimate was 1.06, a little better than we thought here, primarily on the expenditure side. Revenues finished about $40,000 over budget, water sales were just slightly under budget by about 1 percent, or $60,000. However, that was made up by connection fees from the Tower Court and Portillo's developments. On the expenditure side, fund finished about $400,000 under budget, similar variances as the general fund, salaries and wages. Again, we budgeted for full staff, and then repairs and maintenance on the vehicle side. Loan overage here was due to the timing of the water tower maintenance contracts, and that was in the contractual category. Included in the report is information on all the other funds, I just wanted to highlight the two major operating funds, since those are the most important when it comes to operations. On the pension fund side, both pension fund, funds were hit with some market volatility in the third and fourth quarter. If you remember, the third quarter, we saw some pretty dramatic drops, and then gained some of that back in the fourth quarter. On the police side, finished the year with gains and, gains and income of about $430,000, $429,000, for a total return of 1.08 on the year. That is obviously dramatically less than our X-ray assumption of 7 percent. However, you gotta remember, there's some pretty severe volatility in the last two quarters. On the fire side, we finished the year with gains and income about $160,000, for a total return of 0.57 percent on the year. Again, largely volatility in the market and just where we're at from a timing standpoint ending the quarter.
Brian, do you, do you receive their investment reports?
I do.
Okay, 'cause I used to, and I don't anymore, but you're...
I see them every month, I can get them to you.
Okay, so you're on top of where, okay, thank you.
Broader economic indicators here, I changed up this slide a little bit from traditional, just looking at the beige book. The beige book reports largely on seven categories of market activity and notes improvements, no change or a decrease in activity. Just a couple highlights here, consumer spending noted, noted some strong summer sales so far in lawn and garden and vehicles. We'll see that more likely our second quarter of this coming fiscal year. Any bounce from that that hits locally. Construction and real estate saw gains in activities, strong sales prices. Noted agriculture was off to a good start. Weaknesses were noted in business spending and manufacturing, noting declines in hiring in inventory levels, as well as the oil and gas industry and heavy machinery. So banking and finance and prices remain unchanged for this report, so with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for Brian? I'll just make a note, the internet, shopping on the internet is eating our lunch, is eating everybody's lunch, every trade publication I read. In fact, I was with my daughter over the weekend, and there's pretty much nothing that she buys, other than on the internet, so I told her her community was suffering greatly because of her spending. But it, you know, I guess it's just, a younger generation thinks it's more convenient. So I think we have some positives. Floor and decor will be open in the fall, 16 million, 18 million they're estimating in floor and tile and those kinds, so that fills a great spot at Gurnee Mills and brings in much sales, and I think trying to focus on stores that don't compete with the internet, and I know we all hate the mattress stores, but mattress stores don't have to compete with internet sales, so anything we can do as we work and talk to developers and that that brings in businesses that don't have to compete with the internet helps us. Malls are also in the process of kind of reinventing themselves, according to your boss, and I've read that too, where they, yes, people will shop there still, but primarily it's entertainment and restaurants, so we've had some great discussions with the Mills about some things that can be done to build off of that, and we are getting ready to do survey next week. All right, so the Mills wants to survey the community, we've talked about this off and on for the last year. What, what does the Mills need or are missing that, you know, will make you want to come here more often or shop here more? So the village is gonna be circulating a survey monkey, and, 'cause I think we all get it, I know I do, if we only had this store, if we had this store, if we had that store, so I'm always inundated with suggestions, I think all of you are too, so this will give the Mills some quantifiable data from our community, what stores they should be pursuing, so I take that as a real positive sign to, to kind of make sure that we protect our sales tax turf. But it's, I mean, we've done all the right things, but it just means we're maintaining the status quo, we're not making giant leaps forward, so we'll continue to work on that. So that's my two cents. Everything else looks good, though, thank you, Brian. All right, and speaking of economic development, next up, we have, Ellen is going to just quickly kind of walk us through, or broadly walk us through, where we are with the East Grand Gateway, what we've gotten accomplished so far, and what the next steps are over the next few weeks, so that we end up with an actionable plan here pretty quick, so Ellen, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this corridor, as you know better than I do, has been a topic of resident input for many, many years, most recently during the fall, when we updated the strategic plan. And we've been, as a village, dedicating considerable capital resources toward the area, and getting positive feedback, I think, from the neighborhoods, from everything I've heard, and now it's really time to take that out onto the corridor, the commercial corridor, and spend some time looking at the corridor itself. So it was with that in mind that we reached out to the Urban Land Institute last February. The last time our corridor was intensively studied was 2004, and that study that was done while very thorough was very focused on the physical attributes of the corridor. So one of the primary advantages that we saw in working with ULI was to look at the corridor from an economic perspective. We knew that if we were selected for their technical assistance panel, that every one of those panelists is a practitioner in the field, they're developers and market analysis and planners and designers and architects, so they know what's being built and how to finance it, and so that's, that was really a model that we wanted for the corridor at this particular point in time. So just to kind of recap the process, we applied back in late February, and we were selected by the Public Policy Committee of ULI Chicago, which is a 1,300-member organization of real estate professionals. They selected us, they do just one or two of these a year, so we were thrilled to be selected, and I think very, a critical component of our application was the fact that we reached out to Waukegan. They really focus on spending their time to study projects that then have regional applications, so it's not just one community benefiting, it's really multiple. So that was a key component, and in fact, Waukegan officials did attend the tap with us a couple weeks ago, and it was very helpful, and I think there's some interesting opportunities that we can work together on in the future. So after we were selected in March, between then and June, we started to define that scope of work, which we'll talk about in a minute, and prepared a briefing book for the panel, which included everything from demographics, property value trends, list of businesses, you know, a list of all, a list of all the folks that needed to be invited, and that ended up being about 150 mailed invitations and 2,000 CTY calls that went out, and then that brought the tap into town just a couple weeks ago, on the 12th and 13th. Spalding School was our host, turned out to be a perfect venue, we couldn't really have asked for a better, a better sense of hospitality, it was a comfortable, convenient place for the neighborhood to come and, and join us, and that was really key, and when we actually get to the point of proposing the recommendations, we'll also hold that at Spalding School. That is still being scheduled, we're looking at late August or early September, and the idea there is for a few of the panelists to come back, and all of the ULI staff that were involved, and really lay out for us our roadmap for the next five, 10 years, whatever timeframe we think makes sense. So following that presentation, once we get that scheduled in the next month or so, ULI staff will work with us between now and when we prepare our budget, so the timing of this actually is working out pretty well, because they will be engaged with us, helping us to understand what needs to come next, we can do further research, come back to you with recommendations, and put those in the budget for next year, and then subsequent So just a few shots from last week's, two weeks ago panel. The panel we had was 11 members, developers, urban planners, there was a woman who founded a market feasibility firm, analysis firm, architects, designers, a transportation engineer, so we really had it all. ULI, as an organization, tends to attract kind of the creme de la creme, that's just sort of their reputation, and, and our panel was absolutely no exception to that. We couldn't have asked for a better group, they really, they really covered all aspects. On pace, sent a bus for us to use, and a driver, and their regional planner, and they participated in the interviews, so that was a wonderful collaboration, and many of you participated, so thank you for participating in that. The scope of work that we presented the panel with included five primary questions that guided their discussion. The first question was, what are the opportunities to develop a unique identity for the corridor and enhance its potential to become more of a gathering place for the local area? What's the appropriate mix of uses, business mix? Do the two sites anchored by the Salvation Army, the Habitat Re Store, and the Family Dollar Store make sense for grocery? Used to be Welton's, we've had a lot of requests for grocery, so we specifically asked them to look at that site for grocery. What role should the village play with regards to the use of incentives to catalyze new development? And is there an opportunity to collaborate with Waukegan? And I think we know the answer to that is yes. So we always want to build on a position of strength, so we started out by showing the panel what we thought were our strengths, and one of them is business mix. If you look at these, you know, this represents the 48 businesses and sort of categorizes them on the corridor. First of all, just to know there are 48 is probably pretty surprising, I think that's a pretty big number. 33 of those 48 generate sales tax for us, and if you look at the categories, I mean, these are, you know, some nice national retailers, there's some regionals that attract because there's just few of them, maybe the nearest next paint store, the nearest music store is 10 miles away. So we're attracting a regional audience, so we need to build on that. So note, note the preponderance of sort of building supply-related stores, there's paints, there's tools, there's the Re Store, and there's thrift stores, and when you put those all together, you start to have the makings of a retail cluster that's, could be a very interesting piece of our pie here. So as the panel addressed the scope, a few themes started to emerge, and that's what we'll share with you, these are, these are sort of the big ideas, and we'll hear more about these when they come back to present the full recommendations. But the big ideas are, before investors will spend money to develop new, you know, new, new buildings on the corridor, they need to know that the rents they can charge are gonna support the cost of new construction. So our first task, job number one for us, is to re-energize the street, because right now, the rents don't support, for the most part, the cost of new construction. So we need to get people out and about, you know, patronizing businesses, bring those businesses up, so that over time, we re-energize the corridor. The possibility of creating a home improvement cluster is one of the, one of the big ideas. They noted that we have the four thrift stores, that we have Building Re Store, which draws, we're the only one in Lake County, we draw from a 32-mile radius, diameter, I guess. So people are coming into Gurnee to use that, that store. So the idea is, the millennials sort of like the vintage thrift, well, a lot of us like thrift shopping, but the millennials in particular are looking for unique finds that might, that, you know, we, we could capitalize on that and really make something of it. Our best customers are the neighborhood. Right now, it's very difficult for them to get to the corridor. You know, they may have to go down several side streets to get up to the corridor in the back and forth, so let's figure out walking paths or ways to get those neighbors up to the corridor more easily. The streetscape, focus on making it pleasantly walkable and pleasantly drivable. So pleasantly walkable means things like, make it easy to cross the street, so maybe you have bumpouts to shorten that distance to cross the street, you know, streetlights with banners. Separate the sidewalks from the street as much as possible, we don't have a lot of depth in a lot of places, but where we can, you know, pull it back and maybe add some street trees or some landscaping, make those sidewalks wider. You know, it's, it's, it's more capital investment, but it's things we can control, the things that we can do. Add services to the east side of town, one of the, one of the, you know, sort of aha moments that we had was, when you think about our civic buildings, library, post, you know, for the most part, they're central and west, we don't have a lot of buildings east, so perhaps that can change, and, and it brings people out and about and generates activity. So perhaps a disappointment might be the fact that grocery is probably not the most likely addition to East Grand. It's, it's not indefinite, but with Jewel Air and Lewis, you know, it's gonna be a tough sell, in the panel's opinion. So maybe we work to use that, that site, not for grocery, but we use it as a public gathering place. We have connectivity back to the park, we have benches, and we program it with food trucks and music, and get people out and about, and then they see, businesses see opportunities, so then maybe you add an ice cream store, you add a cafe, you add a sandwich shop. And over time, it becomes redevelopable because of the fact that businesses want to be there, because that's where the people are. So the panel covered a lot of ground in two days, those were, those were kind of the big ideas. They also reminded us that Green Bay Road is main and main, which, the main and main is a term in the industry for, you know, where, where your retail wants to be, is it main and main? Well, Green Bay and Grand is main and main on that side of town. So the, the national retail wants to be over by Green Bay, and as you move west, it tends to be a little more local in nature, and that's okay. The city of Waukegan is working on an overlay district for their portion of Grand Avenue, and there may be some opportunities to work together to develop consistent signage regulations, setbacks, so that as a developer looks at the whole corridor, we're working together. So stay tuned to the, for the meeting in August. If residents want to be part of that, they can join our East Grand Les Serfs, and we will send out the final date when it's selected. Thank you all for, for supporting this project, I think you're going to think that it was a good bang for your buck, and we'll move forward.
Well, we're probably gonna try to do the meeting as a quasi-committee, the whole, so that all the trustees can attend, and we'll do a public notice, so, and then we'll also make sure we promote it with the public, and I appreciate the trustees that gave up time. And I appreciate the trustees that gave up time and participated. I know for me, I felt like a kind of a two-by-four on a couple of the things, but like Ellen said, the aha moment, that neighborhoods on the north side of Grand are so totally isolated, it's so inconvenient for them to get to that commercial corridor. You know, there's a huge opportunity there, and the fact that there, none of the public entities, government entities have any programming over there is another huge opportunity, and that's low-hanging fruit, that's easy to fix, and would have some big bang for the buck. So, we got, we'll have a lot of things to work on the next few years, once we get the final recommendation. So again, we're trying to figure out what night the, the meeting will be at Spalding. It'll be, we'll make sure the public knows, but we're going to try to notice it as a committee, the whole meeting for us, so we can all be there and hear it at the same time. So that's coming. Other questions?
I just have, oh, sorry, Dan.
Hey, no problem, I'm behind you.
Mine's quick.
You go first, you go first, ladies first.
Trustee Thorntonson.
All right, it's really quick. I just want to make sure if it goes into September, which would be my vote, that it doesn't conflict with any of the grade school and high school open houses.
Thank you, yes. Agreed.
Trustee Wilson.
Thanks. The music store had closed down, and it would be great working with Waukegan, especially if it comes down to making it easy to get through there. On Oakwood, there are several cars that park on the street there, this is Waukegan, so again, working with them. And then also on Hyde Park, Hyde Park and Oakwood, there's a, somewhat of a business, a nursery that's run out of there, and so when you go to exit there, there's a car that they'll have parked there, and so you'll have to go around, get into oncoming traffic. And sometimes when cars are turning in right there, that becomes dangerous, especially when you've got children, you know, that are walking out there. So Hyde Park and Oakwood is a very dangerous intersection, especially at, you know, between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock.
We did hear about the construction being, you know, not surprisingly very impactful negatively to the businesses, I'm sorry to hear about A Major Music, they, they did participate.
No, the CD store.
Oh, okay, good, good.
The CD store?
Yeah, there was a CD and music store that was in the same building as-
I was just at A Major, so I'm like-
That's all right, they just stopped making VCRs, too, I found out.
Yeah.
And she was kind enough to come, she came to our evening round. We had, we had about 24, we had 24 participants during the day that came to the interviews, and 12 at night. We would have loved more, but, but really, people like that that came and gave us concrete input, you know, that was fabulous, we really appreciated the businesses, and we had several representatives, several owners of small businesses come. She, you know, she was one of them. And we talked about the construction, and one of the things we're going to, going to try to do on our weekly construction announcements is to put a, a weekly update to where, you know, not only our projects, but where the state and county projects are as well, which takes a lot of staff time, but I think that's what I was hearing, was that they'd like to know where to direct their customers.
Sunday, we had an accident right there at 41 and Grand Avenue. There was somebody who had some sort of, I forget what it was, but it was medical, that's the reason he ended up hitting five of the cars that were right there. When we went, when, when the bus went by there, was the panhandler guy there? No, okay.
We covered a lot of-
Just as far as how they view.
All right, well, we've got some good, oh, I'm sorry, Greg, trustee Garner.
Just be mindful of, one side of 41 is, is excellent, because the railroad track is not there, but on the railroad side, I know that we're going to redo that. Hopefully, it will be open like the west side looks with landscaping, I haven't seen the plan, but make sure we get that right, because that's the corridor that leads into the east side, and if that's not inviting looking, right now, it's like a little tunnel you're going through.
They'll, they'll raise the railroad bridge and push out the-
Are they going to push it out as wide as the other side, so that it's, do you know what I'm-
I don't know the building yet, why is the other side building bigger than the other side?
The point is, make it as inviting as the other side. I mean, coming westbound, it's like you're coming into this wonderful place called Gurnee, but going eastbound, it's like you're going in this dark tunnel. We want to make sure that it's symmetrical on both sides.
Yeah, the state engineered it and everything, we'll get the full names, but one of the suggestions from the, the panel was some kind of brand or identifier for that area that we could work with the state to get put on the bridges.
Sure.
So as you go east or west, it kind of identifies that area and stuff, so those are some frosting.
Right, because if we get that one wrong, it'd be 20 years for-
Yeah, no, I, the, the plans are pretty significant, but we're like three years away from being done, or at least, since they didn't bid it this year, that may, number may even change again. But there's, there's opportunity now to do some things, so when that construction's done, there's a nice gateway to, to go in, so. So yeah, I think you'll appreciate when we get the recommendations from the ULI. Then it'll be up to us to incorporate it in the comprehensive land plan, and the walkability plan, and our strategic planning and all that stuff, so this is just the beginning. But good stuff, I, I was very impressed with some of the things that came out of the discussions.
Mayor, I ask one more thing. Ellen, you and I were talking about, like I have some friends that live east of 41 that weren't able to make those nights. Have you thought, or did ULI, were they concerned about the limited attendance, was, was there a base population that they were looking to achieve, and might you consider some additional feedback from a survey monkey?
Yeah, I, I think we should do that, thank you for mentioning that, again, we did talk about that, and I absolutely agree, it's a great opportunity. So, so I think between now and when they come back to present the final recommendations, a couple weeks, we should do a survey monkey and get some more input. I, I was, you know, would have loved some more input, I was a little, really actually quite surprised by the 24 that came during the day, but the 12 that came at night was the surprise, so I'd like to, I would like to reach out and, and do that. So we'll, we will, we will launch that probably toward the end of this week or early next week, and have that out for a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
How many survey monkeys do we end up with the walkability?
400, over 400.
Wow.
It's tremendous response, it really is.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
We're going to have fun with that one. Okay, survey monkey's pretty impressive, so. All right, then that's the end of our reports, right?
Correct.
All right, we have no old business?
Correct.
New business, approval of ordinance 2016-
49.
49, amending Article 2 of the Gurnee Municipal Code, Chapter 90, entitled Public Passenger Vehicles.
Sure, so I'll give you a brief overview, and then Randy Ebertowski, the general manager of Gurnee Mills is here. The Mills runs a shuttle between the Mills and the naval base, and they've been providing this service free for sailors and their families, is an easy way to get back and forth between the base and the Mills. Just like us, budgets are tight, so they're looking to offset that fee a little bit, which to them is over six figures a year, so the Mills is proposing a nominal, nominal fee for this service. As the municipal code is currently written, that's not allowed, so we worked with Attorney Winter and the police department on amending the municipal code, so Brian came up with language, and I'll read it to you quick. Shuttle bus service means bus service that provides only shuttle transportation to and from prescribed locations on a regular schedule pursuant to a designated route approved by the village. So by inserting that language, having a set route approved by the village, we believe we can get this done for Gurnee Mills, and not end up with these jam vans popping up all over town, running all over the place. So that's what's before you tonight. Like I said, Randy's here, he can talk a little bit more about the shuttle and the importance to the Mills, and kind of the situation he's in.
Yes, good evening, thank you. A little bit about the shuttle, we started it in December of 2013, and we ran it for a couple of months to get an idea of how much success we would have, how much ridership. And we run it on Friday afternoons, Saturday all day, and Sunday all day during the mall hours. And it's round trip from the Navy Base to the mall, continuous. Each round takes about 90 minutes. So during those two months in '13 and '14, we had 4,500 people end up riding in just two months. Since then, we've ran it continuously, and we've had almost 62,000 people riding the shuttle. So it's very successful with the sailors, and as a Navy veteran who graduated from Great Lakes a few years ago, more than a few years ago, it's great to be able to get off base and be able to interact in the community, and we love having them at the mall, it's a safe place for them to come, and I'd rather, we like them spending their money in the mall, too. So it's a great customer for us, and it's also a nice community thing, and it's important relationship we have with the base. So we aren't looking to make any money on this, I would never want to make any money off, off a sailor and a program like this. This is merely to offset some expenses, and, and even at the rates we're thinking, it would, it would offset maybe a third of the total expense. So just something that we're, we're asking for in order to charge the small rider fee. So with that, any questions?
No, it's been wonderful, you know, to bring the Navy, and certainly can understand the expense. We needed to make the change, because we don't want to go back to those days we used to have out there with some of those vans, so Brian did a good job of making it very, very narrow, and we'll work with North Chicago to make sure we complement each other, and I think it's a good thing. Questions from the trustees, trustee Garner?
What's the nominal fee?
Two to $3, something like that per rider, one way.
Is that round trip?
One way, two or $3 per rider, because not everyone takes it to the mall, and not everyone takes it back from the mall. So again, a two or a $3 fee is what we're looking for.
Trustee Thornton.
Randy, how does that compare then competitively? I know the mayor knows a Gurnee businessman that has a fleet, you know, we've got, I know him, I used to work with his wife, but how does that compare? Do you think yours would be a little less?
Been a taxi, how's taxi rides-
Taxi rides are usually about $20 per cab from a ba, from the base to the mall, it's about $20.
And how many riders?
You could probably fit four or five riders if you're in a van. So usually what happens from experience, you, you break it up. If it's a $20 fee, then you, you have four, four people, you split it.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee Wilson.
I was just going to say Uber would be like 12 bucks. I mean, this is understandable.
All right, if there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was from trustee Ross, second trustee Hood. Roll call, please, Andy.
Thank you.
Hood.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Thorntonson.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, and we read those, so item number two is-
Yeah, item number two is going to be pulled. The petitioner had an incident and injured his rib, so I wasn't going to make him come in here when he wasn't feeling well, so he felt that by August 8th, he would be back up to snuff and be in here before you, so, August 8th it is, that's what we agreed upon.
All right, so that I, so that's the end of our regular business. I can reopen the floor to public comment, Mr. McFarland.